Patient and Blood of Legends will be led by myself. As we gather here today as members of Tiffin City Council entrusted with the responsibility to shape legislation that affects the lives of those in our great city, let's let us take a moment to reflect. I ask you to lift your heads, open your eyes, and open your hearts. Our most serious duty is to look to the community we share, the examples we make, and the legacies we leave, planting seeds in a garden we may never get to see. That should be our greatest, most courageous, and noble intention. Thank you.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll start by asking the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Thacker?
Here.
Councilmember Dougherty?
Here.
Councilmember Hayes?
Here.
Councilmember Horniman?
Here.
Councilmember Jones?
Councilmember Resner?
Here.
Councilmember Snay?
Let the record show that five of seven councilmembers are present. Minutes from the May 19th, 2025 Regular and Committee of the Whole were distributed. Are there any substitutions, corrections, deletions? Okay, seeing none, the minutes will stand as presented. We're now under committee reports. Finance Committee, Councilwoman Resner?
No report, Madam President.
Law and Community Planning, Councilwoman Dougherty?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. A Law and Community Planning Committee meeting was held Thursday, May 29th, in council chambers immediately following the Labor and Relations Committee meeting. The purpose was to discuss mayor's request for legislation 25-01, the mobile food unit vendors license, and any other business that may come before them. Attending were members John Hayes, Dennis Snay, Mayor Lee Wilkinson, City Law Director Zach Fowler, City Administrator Nick Dutrow, Councilmember Scott Horniman, and Cheyenne Thacker. Also attending were Fire Chief Rob Chappell, Marissa Huss, and Donna Gross. Dougherty called the meeting to order at 5:20 PM. First, Mayor Wilkinson started by stating we were here today to discuss Chapter 723 of the city codified ordinances regarding the mobile food preparation vehicles, vendors, definitions, purposes, licensers, and operations. Wilkinson then had Fire Chief Rob Chappell explain how his office is currently conducting the mobile food vendors inspections at this time. Chief stated the state fire code will be changing this year regarding mobile food vendors, and he wanted to make sure Tiffin City ordinances will align with these new changes. Chief stated how they will be using iRoll inspection reports online. Through this profile, you or your vendor can upload all required documentation, inspection reports, and your local health department license. This inspection can be done through any fire department participating in the iRoll, which includes the Tiffin Fire Department. Each vendor then will be issued a QR code that will be visible on mobile food trucks. This QR code will allow inspectors to easily scan the code and look up all information pertaining to that specific food truck slash vendor, and can also verify their compliance with all state codes. Chief stated many cities around Northwest Ohio are already using iRoll. This will accompany a $29 fee per year to iRoll and last one year, beginning on April 1st of the year and ending on March 31st of the following year. A $50 per year permit will allow for vendors to set up in Tiffin for special events. This includes both public and private property. Additional permit fees may be charged depending on the event slash organizations. Nick Dutrow explained how all permits permission and clarified questions that come up regarding the many different circumstances that arise from this. Nick also stating vending from on-street parking spaces is permitted only with a valid mobile food preparation vehicle vendor's location permit, and from one parking space directly adjacent to the property owned by the operator of the full mobile preparation vehicle, or if written permission is provided by the adjacent restaurant or property owner. It was also noted Tiffin has a two-hour parking restriction from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. However, mobile food vendors will not fall under this two-hour parking rule as long as they are operating out of a mobile food vehicle. Once a mobile food vendor ceases operations for the day, they will be deemed closed and will have to move their vehicle from said location. Permits for public use are at a cost of $25 per week. These agreements can go as long as one month. Zach also informed council on various oper- I'm sorry. Zach also informed council on various options for city council and answered council on any questions asked. Next, Marissa Huss with destinations Santa Monica County and the chamber, and Donna Gross with downtown Tiffin came to speak and inform council on some of the challenges their organizations face regarding the current policies of mobile food vendors. They came asking for as much clarity as possible and are updated ordinances for Chapter 723. Donna also passed out a downtown Tiffin advocacy paper stating what they were for and against regarding new changes. Hayes motioned for law director to draft legislation to amend languages discussed. Councilman Snay seconded that motion. The motion carried three to zero. Lastly, Nick Dutrow stated that property recently acquired by the city of Tiffin on Water Street for the high-rate treatment facility needed an extension on a lease from prior owners. Nick stated some delays on the seller's end had come up and that the sellers needed an additional month to move all their possessions out. New month-to-month lease will end on July 17th of 2025. If an extension is neither or after that, the city of Tiffin will charge sellers $500 per month until they leave the premises. Hayes made a motion to have the city law director draft a new lease. Snay seconded the motion, and the motion passed three to zero. With no further business, the meeting adjourned at 7:12 PM. That concludes the report, Madam President.
Okay. Any questions or comments from other councilmembers? Okay. Materials and equipment, is there anybody from that committee?
There's no report, Madam President.
Personnel and Labor Relations?
Thank you. There is a report for Personnel and Labor Relations. A meeting was held in the city chambers on May 29th, 2025. The purpose of this meeting was to discuss mayor's request for legislation 25-29, an appointment to the Tree Commission. Attending were members John Hayes, Cheyenne Thacker, and Kyle Dougherty. Also attending were Mayor Lee Wilkinson, Law Director Zachary Fowler, City Administrator Nick Dutrow, councilmembers Scott Horniman and Dennis Snay, Fire Chief Rob Chappell, and from the public, Marissa Huss and Donna Gross. Councilman Hayes called the meeting to order at 5:15 PM. Mayor Wilkinson recounted the appointee Brenda Young's previous time spent working for the city of Tiffin. He also highlighted a proclamation made in 2024 for the appointee's years of exceptional service to the city of Tiffin. Thacker motioned to have the law director prepare legislation accepting mayor's appointment. Dougherty seconded the motion carried on a vote of three to zero. With no other business, the meeting was adjourned at 5:17 PM. That concludes my report.
Any questions or comments from councilmembers? Okay. Anybody from Recreation and Public Property?
No report, Madam President.
No report for streets, sidewalks, and sewers. Economic Development and Downtown Planning, Councilwoman Horniman?
No report, Madam President.
Okay. Does anyone see the need to schedule a committee of the whole? Okay. We are now under reports of the officers. His honor, Mayor Lee Wilkinson.
Thank you, Madam President. Just want to remind our residents that next week is beginning, next week, not this week, next week, beginning June the 9th is Rumpke Bulk Trash Pickup. Five items maximum, and no paint or other toxic chemicals should be put out for that. Do we have a Rumpke representative here who would like to address the residents of Tiffin at this time?
Thank you. My name is Blake Austin. I'm the municipal and public sector specialist for Rumpke. I usually stop in around this time of year just to kind of touch base with everybody, usually a week or two before the big item pickup curb side. And we just wanted to, one, just remind you guys of the rules and procedures that we're not having our drivers being overloaded with material. We do ask it be, like the mayor mentioned, only five items max per household. We accept everything that's normally picked up throughout the year as a normal bulk pickup item, so it includes appliances, so like fridges and freezers, we can take those. They need to be without, I'm just blanking on, CFC material needs to be removed from it. The resident is responsible for that. And then any mattresses, furniture with upholstery on it, we ask that it be plastic wrapped just for the safety of our drivers. We haven't really had any issues with that in the community in big pickup week or otherwise. It's just something they, I asked them, is there anything you want me to remind them of? And they said, please make sure, if there is any furniture set at the curb next week, that please have it wrapped. Also, while I'm here, I'd just like to touch base with you guys, see if there's, how service is going in your community, and if there's anything we need to be aware of that we're currently not aware of. Silence is good, all right? All right. Just one other thing I wanted to remind you guys. Late last fall, we added, what I, best way to describe is clamshell plastics to our acceptable items list for our recycling program. So that's items you can get at the grocery store that like berries or certain salads come in, things like hench, basically, that are clear plastic. We now accept those. And I know some of you may have came down and toured our old recycling facility a few years ago. We opened a new state-of-the-art facility back in June. We'd love to have you guys come down and take a tour of it. I know it's quite the journey from Tiffin to Columbus, but I, it's one of those things, I promise if you make the drive, I'll make it worth your time. It's the biggest, fastest recycling facility in the country, and it really is, it's a sight to see, and I promise, you make the drive, we'll make it, we'll make it worth your time. Either if you want to come as a group or individually, you can reach out to me. Nick has my contact information. Would love to have you guys down and treat you to an afternoon of recycling material. That's all I have for you guys today.
I will say, the last time I went, it was, it was really cool then, so I'd be intrigued to see it again, just because the process is, it's cool. Like, there's no other way to put it. It's really cool. So, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Very good. Thank you, Blake, and thank you to Rumpke for that report. I appreciate that. That concludes my report.
Yeah, all right. Clerk of Council, Ann Forrest?
No report, Madam President.
Director of Finance, Kathy Kaufman?
Thank you, Madam President. Just briefly, wanted to go over some of the ordinances that you'll be voting on tonight for third reading. Ordinance 2544, as a reminder, that is an update to our fixed asset policy. We're adding language for group assets, and we're also increasing the threshold for fixed assets from 5,000 to 10,000. This was all recommended by our audits team. Ordinance 2547 is appropriating a $1,000 safety grant into the street department budget so that they can purchase additional barrels and cones for safety. And ordinance 25-48, this one is, you're actually doing two things with passing this ordinance. You're approving appropriating funds into the proper accounts in the budget, and then you're also approving the return of advances to the funds that those advances came from. And those were done at the end of last year to make sure that at the end of December, we did not have any negative fund balances on our financial reports. So, any of those, I think some of them came from general funds, some of them came from the sewer fund, and they have to go back to the fund that they came from. So this will take care of that. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Director of Law, Zachary Fowler?
No report, Madam President.
Okay. We're now under written communications.
We have mayor's request for legislation number 25-30, compensation agreement.
Mayor's request for legislation 25-30 is on file at the clerk's office.
Mayor's request for legislation number 25-31, Rotary Park sign.
Mayor's request for legislation number 25-31 will be assigned to the Law and Community Planning Committee.
Finance Director's request for legislation number F25-18, to amend the 2025 Budget Ordinance 24-94 to appropriate funds into the police, fire, and WPCC budgets.
Finance Director's request for legislation number F25-18 is prepared for tonight's meeting as ordinance 2025-52.
Finance Director's request for legislation number F25-19, to approve the creation of Fund 451, OPWC Loan Street Paving, effective January 1, 2024.
Finance Director's request for legislation number F25-19 has been prepared for tonight's meeting as ordinance 2025-53.
Finance Director's request for legislation number F25-20, to amend the 2025 Budget Ordinance 24-94 to appropriate funds into the municipal court's budget.
Finance Director's request for legislation number F25-20 has been prepared for tonight's meeting as ordinance 2025-52.
And we have the first quarter 2025 credit card compliance report from Lyndon Neely, the compliance officer.
This will be on file with the clerk's office.
And we also, there was an agenda change memo this afternoon. There's a letter we received, May 30th, from the Tiffin-Fostoria Municipal Court regarding a new position called the Community Service slash Diversion Officer.
This letter will be assigned to the Personnel and Labor Relations Committee.
And that concludes the written communications.
Okay, great. We are now under oral communications. Anyone wishing to address council may step up to the podium, sign in, and direct your questions to myself.
Thank you, Madam President, and members of council. My name's Bryce Riggs. I know it's been a little bit over a month since I've stopped in the city council, but since I've been in that role as the presidency of the Tiffin-Santa Monica Economic Partnership and the Santa Monica Regional Chamber of Commerce, and obviously I've worked in this role as interim basis for the last six months, I do want to stop in and just thank a number of folks for their support and really their dialogue. Tonight, you're going to hear two ordinances. One's going to be on the food truck policy, and then also the community reinvestment expansion, which is its third reading tonight. Obviously, we'd appreciate your support for that, as it's a nice economic development tool that we use. But I want to thank the administration, Mayor Wilkinson, City Administrator Nick Dutrow, and Law Director Howard, Howard, I just screwed it up again, Law Director Fowler, sorry. Brian, if you're watching, you're probably not watching. My apologies, but I just want to thank them, because obviously, whether it be the food truck policy, our office had an opportunity to review that policy prior to coming to council. I think at the end of the day, our office, you know, obviously dealing with the public and along with the administration, we just look for fair policy that we can communicate forward to the public, and then also, one, that's business friendly. I think where we ended up, you know, right, we always say there's, you know, two different areas we could all end up, but I think we're in a good spot with that policy. There's obviously, you know, all these changes we'd like to see, but it was very nice that we had an opportunity to review that policy. I know that last week, Marissa and Donna, on behalf of the organization, presented the committee, and also the community reinvestment area, we had an opportunity to weigh in on kind of what that area would look like. So whether it be the DORA boundaries, whether it be community reinvestment area, whether it be the food truck policy, it's just nice that we look at other communities around us, and they don't have the opportunity to have dialogue with the administration prior to coming to council, or, you know, before it gets introduced. So I just want to thank the mayor for, the last six months, it's been a really enjoyable experience. You know, I think at the end of the day, if we're here for the right reasons to serve our community and do what's best for the residents, for our businesses, and then the community at large, we're going to be in a good spot. So I just want to thank council, administration, for their support in the first six months, but also the opportunity to provide some dialogue regarding policies that impact our residents and the businesses alike. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from councilmembers? Okay.
Hi, my name's Jamie Fadley. I want to start by saying I don't want special treatment, I just want special consideration. I was informed of a possible, the possible fee per week to park a trailer in town. For those who don't know me or what I do, I own Jam's Markets, and last year I opened a food trailer, Gold is Yum Mobile. The idea when I opened her was just to have her basically around the market. It wasn't, my intention has not been to necessarily travel with her. And in doing so, I've, there was a budget, and it's been a very large investment. So between us, the investment itself is around $30,000. It's not just a penny in a bucket, you know, these are, and it's also payments I'm making on this trailer. I rent the building that I'm in. I pay $2,800 a month to rent the building that I'm in, and that does not include any utilities. That does not include my personal bills. That doesn't include anything beyond rent. So when I started last year, last summer, I was told that because I am a business owner, or, well, that I had, basically, we get, we got special treatment to have, be able to have that trailer outside. So I've made my business model based on that, being told I was allowed to do that. I do know I have special spots technically on my area that I could possibly park on private property, but last year, when I was forced to do that, I had literally had to have my trailer raised up on cement blocks, and it, I didn't necessarily feel super safe in it. And if someone is worried about possible explosions, or I'm not really sure what the super concern is safety-wise, I don't think we want trailers up on cement stilts to be able to level something. I also wanted to make a slight suggestion, maybe if there is a concern for propane and safety, my trailer, my personal trailer, I have smaller tanks that they would be, they could be easily caged. I'd be happy to take them inside at night, whatever it would take to make that safer, or to make the city feel more comfortable about having that sit outside. And again, not asking for special treatment, just special consideration. I don't have a way to pull my trailer either, so it's the whole thing to be have to move that trailer in and out. And $100 a month for someone like me, it may seem silly, but it's, to me, it's just like, oh, shoot, one more bill I have to pay. So, like I said, I'm just asking for possible special consideration. I know that, I'm not sure how many years ago now it was, but there was a hot dog cart. I'm not sure if the rule was made to where that maybe carts or whatever couldn't be on the sidewalk, and he was grandfathered in to be able to be on the sidewalk. So I know special consideration has been made in the past for similar situations, so whatever you can do would be greatly appreciated. Oh, and I open my trailer in a couple weeks. If you guys like pierogies and breakfast food, stop on down. Okay, I'll sign in. Did you have questions for me? Yes, mayor?
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. Thank you, Jamie, for taking the time out of your day to come up here and explain that to us. And regarding the committee meeting that we had Thursday, and I do appreciate all the time that's committees spent, like, working through these, it might have been more productive had we invited you to that committee meeting to get some input from somebody who actually owns a business, and a mobile food cart even is not that mobile.
I know it sounds funny, but it's just, it is what it is for the situation. And I had actually made the suggestion, perhaps you, and it doesn't have to be me, I don't really want it to be me. I don't like having to, like, talk, I love talking to people, don't take that the wrong way. I just like doing things. I don't like to necessarily be the speaker, but if I have to be, I will, you know, protect the other trucks as well. I do also plan events, so having such strict rules and possible confusion makes jobs, my, makes jobs for people like me harder, too. I also feel like having the strict rules will make it harder to get those trucks to come to town. Personally, I think the better food we can get, the better trucks we can get, the better Tiffin can be for our events and such. So, and I know it's been very difficult over the years, just as certain regulations or rules or whatever have changed, to get those good truck, and I'm not just talking trucks, I mean, good trucks to come to town. So, yeah, I would be happy to help do whatever, but, yeah.
Oh, thank you.
Of course.
And I know it's not the committee's role, or even the city council's role, to make a hardship on any business, whether it's brick and mortar or mobile. That's not the intention, and we're trying to steer away from any unintended consequences that might result in that. So, the policy as it's written right now, and I've expressed my concerns with a couple things, with some of the council members and with the law director, that I think it needs to be further clarified as far as a couple things. The fee, one, and the location rules. So, we'll work through those things, and if we have another committee meeting on that, hopefully we'll invite you or anybody else that that might affect back to help us understand what, from your perspective.
I appreciate the heads up, too, by the way. I like, truly, thank you. Okay.
Any other oral communications? Seeing none, we are now under motions. Councilwoman Resner?
Thank you, Madam President. I move to accept the first quarter credit card report for 2025.
Okay. There's a motion. Is there a second? Yes, Councilwoman Horniman?
I'll second that motion, Madam President.
We have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes five to zero. Okay, any other motions for this evening? We're now under resolutions and ordinances.
Resolution number 2025-28, introduced by John Hayes, a resolution approving mayor's appointment of Brenda Young to serve an unexpired term on the Tree Commission from the effective date of this resolution until December 31st, 2025.
This is the first reading of Resolution 2025-28. Councilwoman Hayes?
Yes, I like the motion for passage of Resolution 2025-28.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second? Councilwoman Resner?
I'll second, Madam President.
Okay, is there any discussion? I would just like to add, from my portion of discussion, that I wholeheartedly support it, and I think Brenda Young will do great with whatever capacity she serves the city. So, any other discussion? Okay, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Thacker?
Yes.
Dougherty?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Horniman?
Yes.
And Resner?
Yes.
Resolution 2025-28 passes with a vote of five to zero.
Resolution number 2025-29, introduced by Kyle Dougherty, a resolution authorizing the mayor to modify the purchase agreement with the sellers of the real property on Water Street and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of Resolution 2025-29. Councilwoman Dougherty?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to move for immediate passage of Resolution 2025-29, suspending the city's three-reading rule and declaring an emergency.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second? Yes, Councilwoman Hayes?
I'd like to second that motion.
Okay, there's a motion, a second. Any discussion? Yes, Law Director.
Yeah, thank you. So just background, just, because I don't think everybody was at that committee meeting, but last year you authorized to purchase that property over on Water Street. That'll be the future location, the high-rate treatment facility. Just so you all are aware, I saw this morning the design packet for that facility. It's thick.
The engineer did put it in two parts because he didn't provide the clip.
Yeah.
That's exciting.
But that's still in a design phase, but as part of that purchase, the city granted to those sellers, Gary and Teresa Stevens, the right to store personal property in that existing building for six months from the date of closing, closing on December 17th, '24. So June 17th is that deadline. They are not yet ready to move their property out of there. The city doesn't really have any need for that building to be cleared out just yet. But after discussion, the city administrator thought But after discussion, the city administrator thought was, we should have some sort of terms there for an extension that starts to give them an incentive to move things along. But since this involves control over city property, we asked, you know, council to weigh in and give authority there. So you just see in section one that you're authorizing city administrator to extend it for 30 days with no additional rent, but after that, then he can charge rent for that, for up to $500 a month. So if anyone has any questions, let me know, but.
Any further discussion or questions? Okay. Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the suspension.
Councilmember Thacker?
Yes.
Dougherty?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Horniman?
Yes.
And Reesner?
Yes.
Suspension passes with a vote of five to zero. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the emergency.
Councilmember Thacker?
Yes.
Dougherty?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Horniman?
Yes.
And Reesner?
Yes.
The emergency passes with a vote of five to zero. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the passage.
Councilmember Thacker?
Yes.
Dougherty?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Horniman?
Yes.
And Reesner?
Yes.
Resolution 2025-29 passes with a vote of five to zero.
Ordinance number 2025-44, introduced by Kevin Reesner, an ordinance amending section 135.13 of the codified ordinances to adopt an updated fixed assets accounting policies and declaring an emergency.
This is the third reading of ordinance 2025-44. Councilman Reesner?
Thank you, Madam President. I move for passage of ordinance 2025-44.
Okay, is there a second? Councilor Horniman?
I'll second that motion, Madam President.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the emergency.
Councilmember Thacker?
Yes.
Dougherty?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Horniman?
Yes.
And Reesner?
Yes.
The emergency passes with a vote of five to zero. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the passage.
Councilmember Thacker?
Yes.
Dougherty?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Horniman?
Yes.
And Reesner?
Yes.
Ordinance 2025-44 passes with a vote of five to zero.
Ordinance number 2025-45, introduced by Kyle Dougherty, an ordinance expanding the boundaries of community reinvestment area number five, originally established in ordinance number 16-4, and declaring an emergency.
This is the third reading of ordinance 2025-45. Councilor Dougherty?
Thank you. I move for passage of ordinance 2025-45.
Okay, is there a second? Councilman Reesner?
I'll second the motion.
There's a motion, a second, is there any discussion? Councilor Horniman?
Oh, good.
Don't want to hit me. Just with the Community Reinvestment Act, it's one of those economic tools that we use as a city to be able to expand investment and give us lots of options and such and everything like that, and for certain projects that are going on around town, it's kind of like a tool in our toolbox that we use, and one of the, expanding it not only helps out current projects, but gives opportunity for upcoming projects as well, so.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the emergency.
Councilmember Thacker?
Yes.
Dougherty?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Horniman?
Yes.
And Reesner?
Yes.
The emergency passes with a vote of five to zero. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the passage.
Councilmember Thacker?
Yes.
Dougherty?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Horniman?
Yes.
And Reesner?
Yes.
Ordinance 2025-45 passes with a vote of five to zero.
Ordinance number 2025-47, introduced by Kevin Reesner, an ordinance amending the 2025 budget ordinance 24-94 to appropriate funds into the street department budget.
This is the third reading of ordinance 2025-47. Councilman Reesner?
Thank you, Madam President. Move for passage of ordinance 2025-47.
Okay, is there a second? Councilor Hayes?
I'd like to second that motion.
Okay, there's a motion, a second, is there any discussion? Councilman Reesner?
This is, money is for barrels and cones for safety.
Great. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the passage.
Councilmember Thacker?
Yes.
Dougherty?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Horniman?
Yes.
And Reesner?
Yes.
Ordinance 2025-47 passes with a vote of five to zero.
Ordinance number 2025-48, introduced by Kevin Reesner, an ordinance amending the 2025 budget ordinance 24-94 to appropriate funds into the main interceptor fund, inflow reduction base in nine through 13 and 15 fund, CSO 18, 19, 23, 33, and 37 fund, ODNR Division of Forestry Fund, abbreviated Safety Grant Fund, ODNR Park Projects Fund, and to approve the return of the advances to the sewer and general funds.
This is the third reading of ordinance 2025-48. Councilman Reesner?
Thank you, Madam President. I move for passage of ordinance 2025-48.
Okay, there's a motion, is there a second? Councilor Dougherty?
I motion to second that, Madam President.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Councilman Reesner?
This is just a, kind of a long way, way of explaining the appropriations that are happening here, and then having a negative balance last year, and thank you for keeping this all organized.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the passage.
Councilmember Thacker?
Yes.
Dougherty?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Horniman?
Yes.
And Reesner?
Yes.
Ordinance 2025-48 passes with a vote of five to zero.
Ordinance 2025-49, introduced by Erin Jones, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to sell a 2015 Chevrolet Silverado 3500 to Tiffin City Schools and declaring an emergency.
This is the second reading of ordinance 2025-49.
Ordinance number 2025-50, introduced by Kevin Reesner, an ordinance amending the 2025 budget ordinance 24-94 to appropriate funds into the city administrator's budget, the WPCC budget, and the general administration budget.
This is the second reading of ordinance 2025-50.
Ordinance number 2025-51, introduced by Kevin Reesner, an ordinance adopting a tax budget for fiscal year 2026, directing the director of finance to deliver the budget to the Seneca County Auditor and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of ordinance 2025-51.
Ordinance number 2025-53, introduced by Kevin Reesner, an ordinance amending section four of the 2020, I'm sorry.
52.
Oh. Ordinance number 2025-52, introduced by Kevin Reesner, an ordinance amending the 2025 ordinance 2024-94 to appropriate funds into the police, fire, WPCC, and municipal court budgets.
This is the first reading of ordinance 2025-52.
Ordinance number 2025-53, introduced by Kevin Reesner, an ordinance amending section four of the 2024 budget ordinance 23-94 to create Fund 451, OPWC loan street paving, and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of ordinance 2025-53.
Ordinance number 2025-54, introduced by Kyle Dougherty, an ordinance to amend Chapter 723 of the codified ordinances.
This is the first reading of ordinance 2025-54. Law Director?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. So just on this topic, 723 is the, the mobile food vendor chapter. Something that came up at the committee that we didn't really address, we passed that down, was this question about when the mobile food vendor ceases operation, what's to occur? Do they have to tear down each day? Can it stay up for operation? As it's, as it's written currently and what's been worked in the amendment, there's no change to that language. That language just says, when the operation ceases, they're to, they are to do that, to tear down, so, pretty straightforward interpretation is, each day when the mobile food vendor is done for that day, they should take their equipment, their vehicle, move it from that spot, and then come back the next day. So what I gave to you all is some proposed language to kind of work around that issue, because I know there was some discussion of, well, you know, if they're going to be there for a couple of days, or let's say they do pay for a location permit, and that gives them at minimum one week to be at that city designated spot, should they just be able to be there for that week? So I gave you some optional language I drafted, so there's kind of three different ways to look at it, and there could be others, but just something for food for thought as we work through this process. If there's one of those three that, that you tend to like, we can look at that for an amendment. But I gave you a chart, and then on the backside is just kind of a bullet point of each of those three, each one slightly different, just so you get flavors of different ways to do that. But when you start talking about what's operation of the business, and when do you stop, that opens up a lot of interpretation, so try to have some kind of workable standard in there. Obviously, most of this is going to fall to city administrator, he's the person that issues the permit, is also the person that enforces this, so a lot of it is discretionary for him to determine when somebody stopped, when the city administrator should ask him to move. But if you have any questions, let me know, if, if anyone desires to use any of those and ask for amendment, let me know, so we can write that up and add that in there. The only other thing I wanted to point out is, from what was presented to the committee that we had drafted, and what ended up in the, the ordinance that you now have, there was a slight change I made on, it's 72305B, this is on page three of that ordinance. This just has to do with location, as far as operating on city property, and there's some question about whether, if you're operating on the city sidewalk, is that somehow a different standard? The way the statute is currently written, or the ordinance is currently written, I would say no, that was my advice to the city administrators, that, that still would have to be a designated spot by the city administrator, you would still be required to have the location permit, hence why Miss Fadley was here tonight. This just makes it clear, if you're on a parking spot, that you have to have both the location permit, as well as the license and authority to be there, whether you're the, in front of your own property as a mobile food vendor, or if you have permission from the property owner, then either way, that, that's okay. So I just tried to parse it out a bit, make it a little more clear from what was proposed. Again, if anyone has questions, feel free to reach out.
Councilor Horniman?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to table ordinance 2554, so that we have more time for discussion. A council member who's a ward, and most of this is going to be going on, is not present nor isn't at that committee meeting. So far, we've heard from one owner of a food truck so far, which is great, I've reached out and talked with a couple of them, but I think it's good for council as a whole to hear from them. It's, it's one of those industries where there are a lot of different things, everything from a hot dog cart vendor to a trailer to that, and if I can't table it tonight, I fully intend to make a motion next meeting to table it, so, just because it was introduced, but that's my intention. I think we just need to work out a few of the details, I think that's great, where we're getting more with the trucks being out for multiple days and such, because that's part, talking with the food truck owners, that's part of their business plan, that's part of their marketing. When I went and talked with them, multiple different owners, that was one of their hangups, and that's one thing that was kind of a non-starter. The other thing I think that we need to discuss is, you know, having some sort of clause where we've been operating under one ordinance, and there's been kind of, you know, special accommodations and such and everything like that. If we can have something where either the new ordinance or law clears that up, or if there can be some sort of language where prior arrangements can be discussed and approved by the city administrator, or have an appeal process through the zoning commission, or by council, or something like that, I would like to see that language in that, so.
Law Director?
Just for everyone's sake, when, when you make a motion, make your motion, and then wait for discussion before you talk about your motion.
Okay.
Because you want to make sure there's a second before then you engage in your thoughts.
Thanks. So it seems like there's a motion on the table, let's start there, is there a second? Okay. Seeing none, then that fails. Do you have a, anything else that you, you had your hand up?
Nope, I just figured tableing the, the thing would give us a little more time and have the clock not ticking for like six weeks and such and everything like that.
Yeah.
Just want to get feedback from, we got two missing council members, so I think it's important, and the council president, we haven't heard her take on it at all or anything.
And I, I agree with this council member, Horniman, I'm just, I think we could let it read again and table it then, so the same goal. Could we get a list of food truck permits that have been, that have been issued so far? Like, would you be able to, get that in a spreadsheet or something?
Yes.
You mean of the, of the licensed food trucks?
Yeah.
As of now, I believe we've only had two that have actually done actual permits, so we can, I can get a, a list of the licensed.
Oh, perfect, thanks. That'd be helpful.
One's probably licensed.
Okay. Anything else? Yes, city administrator?
If I may, just, just to bring this up, you know, obviously, summer, warmer months, that's when the food trucks operate typically. While I, I do appreciate, I think it's important that we have these discussions, just to make mention that getting this moving sooner rather than later would be good, just so we can clarify these things before we get to the end of the season. Understanding that there are some changes that we'll really see come up into effect next year, more than likely, but, you know, the sooner we can get some of these things clarified, the better.
Anything else? Yes, Councilor Hayes?
Yeah, I'll let Councilman Dougherty set his agenda for the law and community planning meeting on Monday, but I think we could have this cleaned up with what we heard tonight, and if anybody wants to attend Monday, we could discuss this again and set an amendment and go from there.
Yes.
With, with all due regard, the matter is now with council. So I think, I think your discussions now, now that the ordinance is introduced, unless the council president's going to send this back to a committee, your discussions just happen here at the council meeting.
Okay. Well, I, I still think we have time to discuss, maybe next council meeting, and make the amendment as appropriate, I don't think there's reason to table at this time.
Okay. I just want to clarify, technically, we're still under some discussion post-ordinance 2025-54, so if there's nothing else for that specifically, then I might move into other business. Seeing none, we are now under other business. First, I guess I'll announce a public hearing at the beginning of the next regular council meeting after roll call on June 16th, 2025, regarding tax budget for fiscal year 2026, which was read tonight as ordinance 2025-51. Councilor Hayes?
I'd like to announce a Personnel and Labor Relations Committee meeting for June 9th on, at 5:15. The purpose for the meeting will be a, to discuss a letter from the Tiffin Fostoria Municipal Court regarding a new position of community service diversion officer, and any other business that comes before our committee.
Okay, great, thank you. Councilor Dougherty?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to announce a law and community planning meeting, June 9th, in council chambers to discuss mayor's request for legislation number 25-31 regarding the Rotary Park sign, and any other business that may come before us. This will immediately follow the Personnel and Labor's Relation meeting that same day.
Okay, great. Any other business for this evening? Okay. Seeing none, we are adjourned.
So Zach, just a question.